...cameras. It was just still, complete stillness. And as a high school guy, we tried to get it quiet, but we don't have anything like all the elementary schools do. They did a great job. It even got some feedback from parents that said their kids had a great week because they were fired up and felt prepared and enjoyed not having homework. So, it was a good time. The family life curriculum was presented today by many of the teachers. The staff handled this extremely professionally. Parents had the opportunity to hock it out. We had a very small number of hocks outs and I feel like all the communications handled very well. I do want to give you an update. I'm working with Ms. McLean on the cafeteria budget. I'm trying to finalize that. I will emphasize again, this is a challenging area for us and we're still looking at ways that we can do this more cost effectively. I would anticipate in next month's session, I will bring a budget amendment for this year's budget that will indicate how much money from the general fund we will need to transfer into the cafeteria fund. I'll say historically, at Lakeland Elementary, that amount has been about $20,000 that has been subsidized. So, I would not be surprised to see a number in that area for us this year, but we don't have that final number at this point. That budget will require your approval. We did complete our federal projects and special education budgets for next year and submitted those before the deadline on Friday. Trudy Hughes and Jamie Eldridge, my partner in Arlington Community Schools, worked very well together to get that submitted. And that, there's not much to it, but that budget is posted online and board members, you have a copy before you and that's its own agenda item. We had representatives from Lakeland Elementary School who participated in a full day of joint work at Arlington Community Schools last week to work on pacing guides along with their counterparts at Donelson Elementary and Arlington Elementary and all reported that was a really exciting day and a good day of collaboration. Ms. Lockhart has begun interviewing candidates for our open teaching position. We only know of one right now at the moment. There are a couple more that due to personal circumstances, we may have some folks move out of town, so we're getting a pool of candidates together, but may go ahead and make an offer on the one that we know will be open here in the short term. In addition to the Lakeland PTA, which raised just unbelievable $30,000 in one night at their auction, I also want to note the Lakeland Education Foundation that had its first ever K-55K last Saturday and had a nice little turnout for an inaugural event. It was very well run and I'm not sure of the amount that they raised, but it was a good event there at Lakeland Elementary School. It was a beautiful day for a run. And then finally, the Lakeland Battle of the Books team. I want to congratulate that team. Mr. Chairman, I believe you've already on that team.
She was.
They took second in the county with the Battle of the Books. It's kind of a knowledge goal for elementary school kids and absolutely represented us represented as well. So, no shame there. We're proud of that, that second place. It's great. And that concludes my report. My debt financial report will be during the, as it typically is now during the business session.
Business meeting.
Yep. So, are there any questions?
Any questions for the superintendent? I would like to, while, while, since everything that's gone on, we will be finishing up a school year here in a few weeks and our inaugural school year has gone better than I expected it to. I don't want to speak for the board. The board probably had higher expectations than I did, but it's gone very, very well. You're to be commended for that and your staff and Ms. Lockhart. It's all. I really can't point to any hiccups that we've had. It's been a success, I think, by any measure. So, I thank you for your effort and time on that.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Next item.
The first item is an update from Southern Educational Strategies. Dr. Jim Mitchell was here as he has been most of the month, for the last several months.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board.
Good evening.
And, Mr. Superintendent. Take your comments, Mr. Chairman, or...
Just keep your weapon. I'm sorry. Continue on, Dr. Mitchell.
All right. I think your comments about closing this school year certainly very appropriate and I would commend the superintendent also, but also for education and all of the faculty staff at Lakeland Elementary, though firsthand what thanks to do what you all have done, particularly when you don't know the huge staff that you had, the staff of one. And so, you know, when I heard all of the events that are taking place and I expected you were present at all of those, and these are the things that's hard to keep understanding, what goes into successfully operating a school. So, I have a combination to use. Tonight, even though you're veteran around with issued bonds, you still have underway a due diligence process related to a 94 acre potential school site. And you've made an investment in that due diligence effort. And I'd like to just bring you a brief executive summary of what the preliminary findings are and then to suggest a couple of courses of action for you as you move forward. So, with that being said, Mr. Superintendent, if you'll share these with your board members. I want to emphasize that this is just a preliminary executive summary of what has been going on during the last about 60, 70 days and what's required for the examination of any potential school site. I know there's some people who think there's nothing to that, but if you find a piece of ground, looks like you can build on it, go for it. No, it's not that simple. As a matter of fact, what I have here is the actual due diligence report, which I got last Thursday. So, I have not had time to go through all of this completely, but our team at A2H has been working on this and will be working through this over the next few days, weeks. There's a lot of debt in there that's just acquired before any school board takes home the decision to acquire a site for a school. So, briefly, we'll just kind of use this to show that's the site for what you can see. Outlined in red, you're familiar with that. That's 94 acres located north of Highway 70, east of Canada Road, south of Brownsville. The major components of the due diligence study included these items. Determining the existing zoning and any changes to the zoning that were required and land used for the land that surrounds this site. An examination of the potential weapons and/or strings that are on the property. A preliminary geotechnical investigation, which is basically soil borings and laboratory analysis of the soils. A Phase One environmental site assessment to determine any potential environmental issues that might be on the site. An arborial assessment, looking at the trees, the parts of the trees that are on the site. How many, what size, where are they? A traffic impact assessment and finally, measured utility assessments. Those are things that have been going on actively over the last two and a half months. For the existing zoning and land use, you notice it's a 94 acre parcel. It had been zoned agricultural, which is not acceptable to go build a school on. And your processes through the city of Lakeland have moved these zoning to a credit to be final approval for institutional, which is appropriate for a school. An invitation to that, the land that surrounds this site is already approved for a mixed residential development, which is critical to the growth of the city. Able to have land that surrounds a school that's already pure mark or residential development. So, those items are in the study and that is the first thing that was looked at. Second item, on weapons and streams, preliminary indication is that there aren't any major issues. This is a complex question because when you're dealing with weapons and streams on a piece of property, you're dealing with two major entities, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, we are not, it's involved, and Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation and their Division of Water Resource. Regulations from both of those firms have to be considered when you're looking at a piece of property. And that section is one that we'll be going through very carefully as we look at the detail. It has been determined that there's one small area of weapons on the site. It's not in an area where the building was proposed. That's all reports that the eastern side of the property. And there's about 800 feet of what the state calls waters of the state, meaning they think it's a stream that may have to be mitigated. That means it can be rerouted and some other areas modified if that becomes necessary. Preliminary investigation indicates that it's not expected that stormwater detention would be required on the site because the entire site drains into Scott Street. So, you've got an advantage in that situation. But this weapons and streams assessment piece is one that the engineers and I will be looking at carefully. Next piece was geotechnical assessments and you may have seen a soil boring truck out on the site from time to time. They didn't determine any major issues from the soils that were found, typical soils of this area. And they did 11 borings at 20 to 30 foot depths and then took those cores and analyzed the soils that came from those cores. As you would expect, if these borings were done sometime in March, we had snow in March and a lot of rain. So, there were some wet soils down towards the east side of the property, once again where it drains into Scott Street. That's not unusual and not unusual particularly at the time the borings were done. But we'll be looking at that carefully, particularly as we look at the cores and see the soils that came out of the areas where a potential school building might be located. Next, a Phase One environmental assessment was conducted by a company called ACI Environmental Associates. They performed this work. And that's to look to see, have there ever been any history of any hazardous substances either stored on the site or under the site, in the old landfills, things that somebody buried on the site years and years ago that might create any environmental issues, unfortunately. They did not find any evidence of any recognized environmental issues on the 94 acre site. So, that was a positive. You mentioned also that Lakeland, as our city requires that any developer, your developer of your school board not, be aware of the Lakeland tree orders. And that required an assessment of the trees on the property. Urban Forestry Inc. has performed this work. And believe it or not, they had to go out and determine every tree on the site that's more than 10 inches in diameter at chest height. And there are a lot of trees on the site. What they found is that the existing tree density is about 110 density units per acre. Lakeland's regulation requires 20 tree density units per acre. What that means is that you should be able to be Lakeland's department for maintaining tree density, even though some trees obviously have to be removed when you build, the school built up there. There's quite a number of nice trees on the site and of course, the goal is to try to protect and preserve them as possible. Next, A2H conducted a traffic assessment study, looking at the potential enrollment of the school, looking at the numbers, the types, grades, the age levels of students that might be attending a school on that site based upon the published plan to determine how access would be gained to the school and what impact that might have on the surrounding properties. They did find major issues, but as we would expect, and as you see around any school that has been built in this area, the left turn lane is going to be needed at the perimeter streets, the drive to the entrances, and that's except that's law. So, that people don't place the staff in turn left into the school driveway. And the school driveway, just as you've seen the ones at Lakeland Elementary, particularly the one that's on Seatech Road, is widened and expanded, so that buses have an adequate turn degrees to get in there too. So, those were the major things that came from traffic impact, but we'll be studying that carefully too as we look at this. So, this was the executive summary report. And the last thing that was done in the due diligence phase was careful annualization of utilities. We had meetings with light gas and water and the leaders of their divisions, both electric gas and water, to determine the adequacy of those utilities to the site and how they would be brought into this site. Electric service can be provided from a three-phase service that's already on Highway 70 at this point. That is required for schools, three-phase electric is necessary. Natural gas services can be provided off of Canada Road, there's a four-inch hot pressure line located now in the Canada Road driveway, which will make it very easy to get that gas service into this particular site. And water service is already found along Highway 70, a 12-inch water main that has added to pressure and volume can be accessed and ought to bring enough water into the school for the use and for our power protection and springer systems. Those things that have to be done. Last meetings were held with the city Lakeland officials to look at wastewater and sewer access. Unfortunately, on this site, you have a Scott Street intersection sewer that runs north south on this property and wastewater from this site would be able to rapidly flow right into the Scott Street intersection. So, the basic summary is, at this point, things look good as far as this being an acceptable site for you to consider, you know, making offer of purchase. But we will be going through this full volume, this four-inch thick volume carefully along with our folks, and I'm happy that Pat Hardwood is here and Dr. David Smith is here. They've been very helpful, amazing, in this entire process. This being said, if you recall, when you signed an agreement with the property owners for a 90-day due diligence period, there was a clause in that agreement that said you had the option to extend that, which is our strong recommendation. I've talked to the chairman and to superintendent, your executive committee, that that extension be exercised so that we can study this carefully and make sure that there's nothing, that there aren't any surprises. The next step back to that would be to move forward with a attempt to gain a purchase and sign an agreement with the numbers. So, that's the process, the large, everything's standing at this point. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board might have, and then I have one other comment for you.
Just for the sake of the public hearing, you may not know, the, our due diligence period runs May 8th if we don't extend it. Is that correct? Is that your...
This comes right.
Correct.
It ends right if you don't extend it. And we'd really need enough time to do proper annualization. I think A2H is on a crate found and they've gotten all this covered, as you see, they're working with other subcontractors. And we just need time to look at this and make sure that everything's in there. It doesn't, the hard way, anyway, to extend it further.
And, I'm just speaking for myself. Obviously, this isn't something, we're not this far down the road yet, but based on the results of the election, it looks like the scope of the project probably will change in some form or fashion. If, if we were to move towards a middle school, do you see any problems with that? I know you haven't done all of your due diligence yet, but just your initial kind of impressions and I'm not going to hold it to you.
The shortage of kids, that's difficult. We've been involved during my career with construction, a lot of those issues. And if you decide to have to carefully examination, that that may be an option to consider, then the site could certainly accommodate that. And as we've talked about before, as with any piece of land, not making any more of it. And certainly, often, if possible, if possible, I say, to acquire a site of this site with all of the things that we discussed, had it been already planned, would probably be in your interest, but to answer your question, give the twelfth project a chance, so that could it be accommodated here? Yes.
I'd like to give the board, I'm here to ask any questions to Dr. Mitchell. I don't know if he might have any, but now would be an appropriate time.
I just have a question. If the due diligence expires Friday, do we have to take formal action as a board to extend it or just...
Just see if the executive committee can do that.
Executive committee can take care of that. It doesn't require any action, the Senate can make standard. A notification will go out in writing to the property owners and to the attorneys.
And I think we've got a letter drafted. I don't know if it's gone out or not.
Yeah, it's an option we intend to exercise. It's a light of the contract. The conversation, obviously, with Dr. Mitchell about it, it seems like clearly, no reason not to.
One last thing to do, because you all want to be interested on this, and there are still a bunch to go for, since we've only had this document now for about 36 business hours.
Any other questions? Just one quick question. Due diligence looks good. Understand, it's been like 30 days without any detail and maybe there's no detail to provide at all. Has there been any contact with the landowner yet?
Yes, there hasn't been contact. We've tried to keep the landowners apprised of the fact that we promised to have due diligence done and most of them have been done, they're in the process of studying whether there's contact. Hasn't been.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. You said you had one more comment.
Dr. Harlan and I have been in discussion and talked a few, Mr. Chairman, and it appears that we need to finish this project as far as the due diligence and processes to try to acquire the site. But beyond that, the project for which SES was employed appears to be a halt and therefore, I would give you notice that SES, the last to give our 30-day notice, will be released from our agreement as soon as we know the time to finish this. Because we don't accept any money for work, we don't do. So, if your contract says even one of us can ask for that, we're asking for you to consider that and be aware that unless something else changes, it appears that the project for which we were employed is at a halt. And once we finish this piece of it, then we will give you that. Okay?
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. You've been very helpful as always and we appreciate your time and expertise.
Glad to do it. Thank you very much.
And I do want to note, that would not, at least in my mind, exclude us from choosing to work with Southern Educational Strategies again, with another project. Anyhow, they have absolutely just been invaluable through this process, I can tell you, again, especially given the size of our staffing resources, it just would not have been possible to get even to where we are with the possible land purchase, which, you're expecting the result of the preference, I think, of the really strong investment for the schools to have a long-term planning idea. So, thank you so much for your...
We're hoping, Dr. Harlan, we stand ready to help. Should be nice.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Superintendent.
All right, the next item is a discussion action on the formation of the Ethics Committee and that's one of the things that came out of Laura Harrison's committee review, committee draft, our policy review committee. So, I can't think of the...
Ms. Harrison, you come to the floor.
Thank you. We have been going through policies and it's part of that review process, just trying to make sure we are paying compliance or need to modify new policies that come about that for better operation of the school system or clarification. One of the things that did come out of our review was that we in the school system have authorized the creation of a school district ethics committee. And the process is outlined in policy number 1.106, section 5. So, I wanted to bring to the board's attention that I, through the work and through what we, now that we've got a year on our bill, we through this work, it was realized that we needed to potentially form an ethics committee for any ethics complaints brought by... The list is not, of course, inclusive, but could be any one, any employees of the school system, against any employees of the school system, anything related to any employment, potential ethics violations. And then, from there, the ethics committee would review, make, basically make an investigation into the matter and then make a recommendation to the superintendent to potentially would need to take action as it relates to with anyone in the situation or whether any of the things in the school board. So, it basically creates a formal process for any ethics complaints, or it's a committee that would create a formal process for any ethical complaints brought to the school system.
And this is a work session, so it will be informal tonight, it's open and up to discussions. Any comments or thoughts on that, Mr. Superintendent? Do you have any?
I will just add, I don't believe you said this, but at least as it's outlined here, at least two members of the committee should be members of the Board of Education, at least one other member, instead of consisting of three members. Pointing to one of your terms by the chairman with confirmation by the Board of Education. So, just to clarify the process.
Any other discussion or thoughts? I think it's a good idea. There's no reason not to do it, that I can see. So, I'm in favor of it, that we want to move this item over to our consent agenda for next week.
Good.
One last question. Would you be appointing those members?
I think we would approve the formation and then appoint afterwards.
I believe the policy currently states that the chairman of the Board of Education would appoint it and then it would come for the approval, for the approval of the board.
So, perhaps we could form it next week and then I could bring back some appointments in June for the board to approve. That would probably be for July, the process that we'd be looking at. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. No objection, we'll move this over to the consent agenda. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on 2015-16 special funds budget. As I said, board members, you have that in front of you. It's one sheet. This basically outlines the money that comes through the state from the federal government and this has to be allocated. These are what we call pass-through funds that we, the amount we get is the amount we spend. And, you know, sometimes you can't roll them over, but this budget itself is just the amount that we are allocated for this next year. You see this broken down, Title I, Title II-A, IDA Part B and IDA preschool. Title I is basically, has to do with supporting student improvement. What we use those funds to do is to pay for our reading specialist, Lisa McDaniel, who works in our intervention and on our RTI squared program. The Title II-A is the improvement of teacher quality in schools, so that's professional development. It includes training, it include travel costs for training, paying for subs for teachers that are doing professional development and some things like that. IDA Part B, that's basically your special ed funds. We obviously have a special ed budget in our general operating budget, but these are additional funds that can be used to enhance our special ed programs and that's the biggest one, obviously. That's $168, almost $169,000. And then the IDA preschool, we do get a small amount to kind of supplement or enhance our small preschool program that serves almost entirely special ed students. So, the total federal project revenues is $271,244 and then below, you can see the major department categories to which those funds have been assigned. So, that has been submitted to and actually approved by the state director that supervises this, so we just require that you approve this as well. So, I would recommend this for your approval at the board meeting.
Any questions for the superintendent or discussion on this item? I did the math and all adds up.
I don't mind your check.
Hearing none. Any objection and carrying this item over to our consent agenda for next week? Next item.
All right, the last item on the agenda is another, it's very curious, like policy change that came out of the policy committee's work. This is policy 6.200 attendance and you can find that online in, essentially, Ms. Harrison, you'd allow to run over this one.
No, I don't mind.
The main change of this one was just for clarification. This had to do with the reporting process for students that are deemed to have excessive absences and that lead toward reports of truancy. The policy stated that should be reported to the superintendent. We amended that by saying "or designated." We actually feel very strongly with the process we have in place, basically is within the law certainly, but we also, one of the reasons for the policy review committee is to make sure that our policies are as clear as possible and don't kind of leave themselves open for interpretation. So, I think this is good clarifying language to say the superintendent "or designated" because in this case, we have Ms. Pickens, who is our, not only our guidance counselor, but our student services coordinator, she's the first one that these were reported to and then she reports to me. And we also actually just cleaned up some, I think misspelling, so it's like the guiding, the... model policies at the bottom where they were reviewed. So, a couple of changes, but for those that have been strengthened in the policy, so these changes are recommended, we will do.
Any discussion on this item? These were really almost as clerical and pretty much, the only thing of any substance was we added "or designated" instead of superintendent. Any objections if we're carrying this item over to our consent agenda? Hearing none, we will put that on our consent. We're going to get, are there any announcements?
I believe, I don't know if the entire board, but I believe our mandatory TFBA training or annual TFBA training is coming up next month, so if you have not signed up for your mandatory training, then please make sure to sign up for your training test, June thirtieth is the deadline.
And you're looking at me, not you.
It's May fifteenth, right?
May fifteenth, yes. So mandatory state training for TF, with TFBA in Jackson. Also, that is, I think we made note last time, that is on the high school graduation line, so it's going to be in the future someday.
Any, any further announcements? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I may.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.